I call the meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. It is Wednesday, August 27, 2014, at 10:04. Everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge their flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Diane.
Today for consent approval. I'm actually going to put that down. There's so many.
Okay.
There are 29 listings, $22,734.36 in tax years, 2012, 13, and 14. We need to create statements for the following tickets. $25.40, $2.75, $46.89, $68.55, $80.48, $81.82, $81.83, $81.84, $99.29, $99.04, 108.73, 110.31, 111.78, 116.42, 116.37, 116.47, 116.57, 118.31, 119.78, 165.98. And then we need to request replacement tickets for... These are mineral counts. Name Schuman Incorporated, Tammy Lynn Campbell, ELS LLC, Schuman Incorporated, Francesa Bennett, Jeanne and Bruce, Jeanne and Bruce, Jeanne and Bruce, Lawrence Hall, H3 LLC, Mary Moore, Donna O'Malley, Barbara Palmer, Michael Robey, Edward Robey, Roger Robey, Cheryl Rosner, Chester Schuman, Schuman Incorporated, and Robert Labor Senior.
Move for approval with a question.
Do you have additional stuff?
I'm going to go to vouchers.
Oh, you're a voucher. Okay, because I was going to ask.
General County Fund, $82,066.85. General County Fund Purchasing Card, $1,001.43. Cole Severance Fund, $27,002.155. Camp Muffley, $49,009.877. Chestnut Ridge Park, $4,006.4476. Mason Dixon Park, $67.19. Assessors' Valuation Fund, $1,007.5725. Unconfinement Fund, $8,002.01. 911 Cash, $254 for a total of $175, $347.41. No budget revisions.
Move for approval with a question.
Go ahead and ask your question.
Okay. Could you explain? I'm a little confused. What it meant by exchange of those tickets, those names, and the mineral rates? What we're doing there?
Replacement tickets?
Yes.
Well, this was issued without a mineral value. Issued without a mineral value. These were issued so they needed to be replaced with the mineral value.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Then I move approval then.
I'll second that. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Renetta.
Okay. I have two requests for reimbursement today. First is the VOCA grant for July of 2014, $3,0932.84, and JABG grant for MAYSP also for July of 2014, $2,437.33.
Move for approval. Reimburse.
I'll second it. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Move.
Also, on the request of Commissioner Bloom, I have the notes from the work session on the public-private partnerships that we had last week. So I just like to present those to you. And then Bill will get one out in the mail to you.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to have it so if... To refresh our memory at any time later in the year, we knew what was discussed informally. Okay. Thank you.
You're waiting on me.
I'm waiting on you.
Thank you. Bill, I thought we'd take a little out of order here and welcome you back. We've really missed you a lot. And I just hope you're doing better and just good to have you... Good to have your presence, at least on the phone.
Well, I appreciate that. You know, I certainly missed attendance at the meetings and regret that I haven't been able to be more involved than what I have been. But I think as most people know, that there's been some complications. That thankfully, thank God, it appears at this point that it's being resolved. So I really anticipate and am optimistic that it won't be too much longer in the near future that I'll be sitting there with you.
Well, thanks a lot. We really appreciate that. My prayers are with you. Sheriff Kizner, introduction new deputies.
Ready.
There's got to be a story... There's got to be a story to come along with this.
Oh, it's a good story.
He needs to tell it twice.
Commissioner Bartola, I've laid your copy in front of your desk. In front of your chair.
Thank you.
Good to have you back.
Thank you, Sheriff.
We are here today to ask the commission to approve the reinstatement of Deputy Craig Rosello. Craig has met all the requirements of West Virginia Code 714.8 that deals with reinstatement of deputies. He was gone from the flock for 10 months, and now he's found his way home. So through some... Through some good fortune to us and sadly to say some heartache to him, he's back with us though. As you'll see, the letter that is included with the letter from me is also... Is a letter that's signed by all three Civil Service Commissioners. In 714.8, the Civil Service Commission has to agree with all the criteria has been met for reinstatement. Their signatures verify that all the criteria has been met.
Move for approval of Craig Rosello to the county sheriff's department.
Happy to second it. We missed you. I've known Craig going way back.
Yes, sir.
Way, way back.
Yes, sir.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Welcome back.
I'd also like to extend the welcome to Craig. Welcome back to West Virginia. You know, the forces get stronger when football season's starting to come in.
You're right, sir.
Any Mountaineer we can get.
Yeah. I hope you feel better.
Thank you, Craig.
Feel better, sir.
Do you think you could suit up?
He's a good enough shape.
I know. I was going to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any correspondence?
I can do the center correspondence. This is... County Clerk Carrie Blaney's not here today, but she asked that I present this to the commission. This is the lease with the mall, former mall people.
Oh, yes.
For a site to house the election this year.
That's the shortest lease I've ever seen. That one paragraph. Wow.
This is for the space that was formerly occupied by the Goodwill.
Right.
She would ask for a motion to approve and sign it.
As requested, I move to approve the specialty lease agreement with the Mountaineer Mall for the former Goodwill location to be used for early voting for the November 2014 general election and authorize the president to sign both the specialty lease agreement and the guarantee of lease.
I'll second that. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Anything else under correspondence?
No.
Okay. Moving on down, unfinished business. Appointments to the boards. We have a couple of boards. Where's our list? Bill, I think you had one. Where's your list, Diane? Am I missing it?
No, we didn't have it.
She... Bill, she's... She went to get the list, apparently.
Okay, I have my list here.
Oh, you got the list? Oh, okay. All right. Go ahead, Bill.
Chris Zaro, to the Citizens Advisory Board of MPO, Kenneth Weiss, five-year term to the Board of Health, and Keith Zullig, to the Board of Health.
Okay. And I second that. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Bill?
Aye.
Okay, I abstain due to the fact that I don't want to...
Oh, okay. Then I second.
Yeah. Well, I'm just abstaining so on the one vote.
He's abstaining on Ken Weiss. It's his cousin.
I support it, yes.
So he decided to abstain.
Okay.
Even though in West Virginia, being a cousin doesn't make any difference. I mean, it's true. As a magistrate, I couldn't hear my aunt or uncle or my niece and nephew, but I could hear all the cousins. And I asked the ethics committee, what commission, one time, why? And they said, "Well, we don't know. That's just the way it's written." I says, "It's because we're all cousins in West Virginia."
Yeah.
So, motion passed.
Okay.
Thank you.
And to clarify, there is no term limit on Chris Zaro, starting on Citizens Advisory.
Right.
The term of Ken Weiss is a full-biter term that will end June 30, 2019. And Keith Zullig, Z-U-L-L-I-G, is being appointed the unexpired term that will end June 30, 2017.
All right. Thank you. And I just want to take the opportunity to thank the citizen participation. I am impressed with... We've adopted this open procedure of nominations and advertisement, and it's working extremely well. A lot of people have mentioned to me that... But for us openly advertising and promoting the positions, a lot of people wouldn't even know they were open. So I really want to thank the people that volunteer their time. They're the ones that make the county run efficient. New business. Discussion of approval of funds for recreation study.
Yeah, I'd like to move for approval and then...
Go ahead. Go ahead and make the motion.
Okay. I move for approval of the funds for the recreational study.
Say how much?
For $2,500.
Okay. I'll second that, but you're going to explain in detail that that's a small fraction of what's being spent.
Exactly. Out of the community forum or our intergovernmental meetings, a committee was formed to meet and address the needs for recreational facilities. And today, the county's taking the first step. We are partnering with the city of Morgantown and WVU to fund a feasibility and business plan. This plan will address the needs of our community and the possible ways of financing recreational facilities and a wellness facility or center. The center would service all ages of our community, both physically and educationally. We have hired the WVU College of Business and Economics, Brick Street Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship, engaging a business study under the direction of Mr. Steven Wright. We will be having several public forums to have input into the city and county residents. And again, what we're doing is a feasibility and business plan that we are paying a total of $10,000 for the plan, which normally would cost anywhere between $100,000 and $150,000. We're very excited about finding out what we actually have, put together what other recommendations were from whether the CROCK or we had a group that was trying to bring in a Y, put everything together, see what our needs are, see what the community now wants, then come up with a way of what our choices will be, how to fund it, and how to maintain the funding. And basically, I look at this as like a wellness facility center that would have multi-use purposes. It would also encompass areas all over the city and the county. So there would be upgrades, whether it would be, for example, several of the small baseball fields could have astroturf, upgrading the tennis facilities, upgrading maybe a central point for the rails, the trails out at the rural center. What this is, we don't know. That is why we're hiring them to come up with it. But to give you an idea, this same group did the study for the Compton Center, and that is the blueprint they're using over in Harrison County, which is taking off. So I'll leave it with that, and then if something else you want to say, Elton.
Bill, is there anything you would like to add?
Not a lot. This is a pretty big bite out of the cake, so to speak. I think we just need to move cautiously on this project. I think the $2,500 is a reasonable contribution to enable us to join with other government entities to pursue a systematic and a comprehensive plan of what would best suit this county. I would support us going ahead. Of course, the motion in the second's already been made, but I think that we just need to keep in mind, we need to proceed with caution and find out what our needs are and our funding sources, and then make a determination on what's that going to build for us.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a very good point. I would just add that private studies we looked into, oh, a year and a half ago, I looked into informally, and they were talking about $34,000, $45,000 for a limited study. And I think this just goes to show that when people work together and they brainstorm together and they come up with better approaches, they can do things more efficiently. So I think this is an essential part. I also want to emphasize the fact that this is over all needs of the county. Every aspect, every corner of the county is going to be studied in this group as to what we should be... What we should be doing. And as Bill said, I'll echo that, as we look at it, how we're going to pay for it and what direction we're going to go. But we at least will have a direction.
And I want to make it very clear so there's no confusion. There is also going to be developed... WVU is pushing forward, and they need an auditorium or aquatic center. This is separate from the aquatic center. However, it may end up being with membership or whatever, working together, but I want it very clear, this is a separate situation that we are working on.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of Superintendent Camp Muffley. Jamby, you're on. Go.
I have Lori Houston here today, and she'll be starting tomorrow, and she'll be full-time with full benefits as of tomorrow.
Very good.
Go for your approval.
Move for approval.
Second, I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
She's cheerleading now.
And you might want to say, you're just not new to this area. You've been working. Why don't you just explain that?
Why don't you explain what her explained?
Let her... I'm going to put in her. You know, where you've been doing, working.
You've been working on the cabs and stuff.
Yes.
Oh, but Camp Muffley, is it right now? Um...
The Chestnut Ridge. You were Chestnut Ridge, so you know.
What, the transition or just...
Just that you've been working.
You've had that experience in the department this area.
Yes. Yes, I have. Sorry. I was confused of what you're asking.
Yeah. So it isn't that we just found you out of the blue. I mean, you've been working.
Yeah. I've been working at Chestnut Ridge. I did my internship there last year, had a good experience. And with Bruce leaving, I gave you the chance to really dive into different aspects of the park and things that normally I would not have the chance to view. And then I've been also watching under Holly as well for this summer.
Well, we're excited to be part of the team with you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay. Reports from elected officials. Sheriff, you have anything further?
I don't.
Mark?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Last week, the state was in to monitor our office for the mapping section. So the findings were at the end that we passed. So we passed our monitoring... Passed the monitoring for the mapping section of the office, which is, I think, what the state told me the first time since maybe '02, from the way their records indicate. So, you know, hats off to the staff there for their hard work to get that done. So it's the first thing we passed, and we're a little excited.
Okay. Very good. Let's see. Any other elected officials? Let's see. Diane, you have anything further? Bobby, you have anything? Jamby, you have anything?
I just have one thing.
One thing?
Just one thing. On September 27th, from May 21st, we're doing another household hazards waste collection, and it will be done out at MUB this year. And there will be more information coming forth.
What's household?
Hazards, like... Your pesticides, your oils, your gasoline, your kerosenes, just things that you really don't know about.
Not your spouses, really. Son came homey out there.
That's pests.
Pesticides.
And we may be throwing paint. I'm not sure about that, but it would only be oil-based. But I'm not sure that we're decided on that.
Oh, you're going to advertise when you figure out exactly?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, but the date's already set, and we're going to write a report.
Okay. Great. Okay. Reports from county commissioners. Tom, you have anything?
Just real quickly, again, I just want to reiterate how excited I am to be a part of this committee that came out of the intergovernmental meetings. A lot of times, we usually talk, and everyone talks, and we say, "This is a great idea, but nothing's done." I think today's the first step in the community, and the key, the community's going to be involved. We're going to have two separate public forums to have anyone give their input, and I believe that's what we're trying to do, to get as much data as possible, to see what the needs are, and then make the quality of life, and retain individuals who come here to either work in the school system, work at Mylan, work for WVU, and offer them recreational services. And I think along with what's going on with the baseball done, and I can't tell people enough what it was like being at that meeting and a room of 75 media people. And my son called me to say that he saw it on ESPN ticker, and it was all going all night long about the city of Morgantown and WVU and what we were doing. And since there was very little on Monday night, we were almost on it for about four hours. So you can't buy that kind of PR. I think it was a fantastic evening. Thank you.
Bill, do you have anything?
Yes. In today's Dominion Post editorial, addressed the issue of the modular homes on the mow ground.
Yes.
I read that with sort of a keen sense of trying to digest what was really being said. And I think there's some issues that it would serve us well to address. First of all, it talks about the dilapidated ordinance that we have in the county and why or why not, or why shouldn't it apply to these structures? The one thing I think sometimes we get lost in issues is that instead of looking for solutions, we look too much at who's to blame. And I think it needs to be recognized by everyone that we need to... This issue has some legal considerations. And one of those is, we need some answers, even if we would adjust the ordinance to within ranges that would be permissible under law for us as a county, I'm not too sure that the owner of that property wouldn't be covered by the grandfather clause. So any adjustments or additions or changes, I'm not sure would apply to doing anything differently than what we have already done with those structures. Elton, you may want to comment on this after I get done. The other thing is, I think the editorial made a point that I think just because we may have an ordinance that doesn't enable us to do something, doesn't mean that we should stop pursuing avenues that wouldn't enable us to do something. I don't know what the tax status is on these properties, whether or not taxes have been paid, and I would assume that they had been or they would be up for sale. If they haven't been, that could be one alternative. The other thing is, if there's a legal course of action that we can follow to get this issue addressed, I really think we should do it. As this county grows and we deal with structures that are old, and not only old, but in disrepair, and I think sometimes our dilapidated ordinance, you know, just boarding up windows and those kind of things doesn't make a structure safe. Not only that, as a community, I don't think we want to get to the point to where we have ghettos. We need to nip those in the butt. I really believe that we should pursue this issue. I think we should refer to Phil Magro, and I think our direction to Phil Magro should be, Phil, we want a very clear and descriptive answer in terms of what can we do about this situation? What can we not do about this situation, and why?
Yes. I'll go along with asking Phil's to issue an opinion on that. We... I don't want... Will you finish, Bill?
I've done it. Go ahead.
Okay. I don't want the public or the newspaper to get the idea that somehow this has been ignored like they implied, because it has not. It's been talked about numerous times. Jamby has come in here and discussed it with us numerous times. We have talked about many different ways of approaching that situation.
This is in a closed...
Diane's got tons of pictures on this. This has been revisited and revisited and revisited. The problem is, and I get frustrated at times because there's a basic lack of understanding of our statutory system that makes for the county commission to be an easy target for almost anything that goes wrong. Our abandoned and dilapidated ordinance, and as the committee members can say, I'm very familiar with it, since I used to argue on the other side of it for the properties. And I have no... I have no problem with admitting that, because that was my job. I was an attorney. The way it is written, it is written right in line with what the legislature gives us the right to do. It's not over expansive, and it's not less. It is exactly what the legislature allows us to do. And one of the things it does not allow us to do is to run a police state where we send troops out there, or in this case, the troops would be Jamby and his people. But you don't have the right to enter on... Just enter on property and start going through things without reasonable cause or probable cause to believe that there's some sort of violation of safety issue. I know that this has been looked at. It's been closed up. They closed it up. They complied. We can't... We don't have the authority just to... And the legislature had given it authority. It isn't that the county commission did not pass a complete statute. They passed the complete statute, but the legislature did not give us the authority to actually go in and just because we think it's unsightly, or we don't even have the authority right now to close someone down that does not get proper DOH approval for going inside... Ingress and egress to the highway. Now, that's a basic thing that the county commissions ought to have the authority to do, but the legislature won't get it to us. If a property does not comply with the DOH, and we have it every day, and Marky, I know you see it every day too, because that's why... Because that's one reason why the prior assessor got so far behind, because you've got a lot of commercial building. One of the key ways you get it is people that applies to go in and out. There are thousands, well, thousands might be an exaggeration, hundreds of properties that build, open up for business, that do not even get a DOH permit to get to enter and exit the highway. And we have zero authority, zero authority to exercise or pass any law to require. We don't have it. So now I get to my soapbox. I've been talking about truly home rule for counties. to get to enter and, uh, exit the, the highway. And we have zero authority, zero authority to exercise, uh, uh, exercise or pass any law to require, we don't have. So now I get to my soapbox. I've been talking about truly home rule for counties. That's what we've got to have, we've got to get the legislatures. Now, I call it home rule, but for counties, it's a little bit different. Cities' home rule is because they're corporations. That's why they need a separate statute. The legislatures can authorize us if they will just trust the county officials and the county commissions to do those things, doing everything from funding volunteer fire departments to deal, dealing with, with building situations like this, to controlling ingress and egress to roads. They can give that to us, they can give us that power. But the legislature repeatedly denies us the power to do these kind of things. So Bill, I agree with you entirely. It, it's so much easier to sit back and point a finger and say, "You're not doing what you're supposed to." It's much more hard, it's much harder to know what in the world you're talking about.
Right.
Then, and, uh, I, I support, and, uh, we'll, we'll go ahead and, and just, uh, send the letter to Phil Magro to see if there's any...
Do we need a motion on that?
Why don't we go ahead?
Yeah, Bill, do you wanna just, uh, move it, and then I'll send it?
You wanna move to, to go ahead and send the letter and ask Phil Magro if there's absolutely anything we can do to deal with these properties?
Yes, I would move that we do that. And I also, in our letter, not only do we wanna ask him if we, if we can do anything, or if we can't do anything, but I think we need an explanation why or why not. I think the public's entitled to know that.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Uh, the, the other issue on this house, before I move off to, to a second thing, uh, is my understanding is that they were in bankruptcy court. And when the things are in bankruptcy court, you can't touch it.
Right.
You can't do anything with them, I don't care who you are, whether you're a government or, or a credit card company or whatever, you cannot touch something, uh, unless you wanna spend a little federal time in jail and do that. And as far as I know, they're still, they're still sitting in bankruptcy court. I don't think we ever got a release from the, the bankruptcy court. Do, do you know whether we ever got a release from bankruptcy court on that?
I can tell you that I, I looked, I called downstairs, and they told me that the thirteen taxes are delinquent, so it could be sold at the tax selling they got there.
Okay.
Well, that, that'd be a start, unless they run it, unless they run it and pay them off real quick.
And, and this particular case, the file was closed after they complied. However, with the, the grass issue, the ordinance does deal with overgrowing vegetation. I'm not sure how wide the DOH right way is in front of that building. So if DOH, when, they may be responsible for cutting down the vegetation in front of buildings. We, we don't legislate ugly, we can't do anything about ugly and unsightly.
Thank you, that's the word I was trying to think of. Say that again, so everyone hears.
We cannot legislate against ugly.
We can only do health, health and safety.
It has to be a health or safety issue, according to the code, which is exactly our ordinance.
Bill, did you wanna add something to that?
The other thing is, is, you know, I think the record needs to be clear that this county commission is not reluctant to pursue any issue. Uh, and if it's valid, this county commission is not reluctant to pursue that avenue which is valid. But we also, as a commission, and I, and I think I can speak for all of us, are not gonna go out and violate the law.
Right, right.
And not do it, we're prohibited from doing that, and it's not in the public interest to do that. So the best I think we can do in this situation is let's create understanding, uh, and, and we all know what we're saying on the issue.
Very good, thank you. Uh, I want to, oh, Sheriff, you wanted to add something on this discussion?
I just wanna say that if you don't know, if, if you know the company's name that has those units up there, if you let Kelly know who that company is, she can check and see if they are truly in bankruptcy.
Okay.
Because all the bankruptcies go through the taxes.
Oh, okay, good.
Oh, yeah, I would, uh, uh, thank you for, for bringing that up, because I, I was gonna mention, before we can sell on taxes, you gotta make sure they're not in bankruptcy. But you, you do that, be, uh, that, that's part of the process of putting up something for sales to check for bankruptcies.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Sheriff, appreciate for that clarification. Uh, I, I hesitate to, to bring, bring this up, but, but I, I had a, uh, I had such a great feeling on, uh, Monday of talking to, uh, Bob Rich from Rich Properties, uh, and, uh, that, that, that I just couldn't help but discuss this a little bit. Uh, he praised Monongah County and its people and its leadership for its, as he put it, obvious, obvious cooperative, committed, working-together relationship that he saw in this, in this county. And that, that was one of the things that really attracted him to the community, and why he said that he is so committed to making the minor league participation in this entire project a positive, family-oriented project, just like, like the county, uh, talked about, uh, what, what we talked about two and a half years ago when we first started this. And, and I was just, I was just, uh, really pleased to, to hear him talk about him directing his staff to the commitment to, uh, make our dreams and the things that Bill, you and I and, and Tom talk about all the time, a reality. Uh, because he says that he felt, he, he said that he felt an obligation, and as he tells his staff, that they have an obligation to make our dream a reality, and he's totally committed to do that. And, and just was really, really pleased about the level of cooperation and commitment to, uh, providing more and more for our people and advancing our community. Uh, now that was the positive. The downs, the down of this, and, and I, I hate even to mention the word, but I don't want false things said. And I read in the, I read in the letter to the editor, uh, a letter from Mike, Michael Sharley, who's an attorney, who, at typical attorney fashion, he puts out a false statement, a misleading, uh, or misleading statement, uh, or only part of the story, and then proceeds to attack you on it, on something that you never did or never said. This county commission has taken no position on trucks. We have, we have, matter of fact, if you listen closely to Commissioner Bloom's first statement, we very much would love to have trucks quit coming down here by the courthouse. But we can't stand by, and I don't care whether it takes place in Washington DC or Charleston, or, or in Morgantown, or, or in, in the courthouse itself. As commissioners, we're not gonna stand by and have people abused and beat up and threatened and, and, uh, and just put down because of a particular position. This commission has been committed to showing the respect, uh, to not only one another, but to every employee and every officer, uh, in this courthouse, and to all the other, uh, city officials and all the other county officials. Uh, we have worked together, and all we ever did, all, all I ever did on this truck issue, and I told Jenny Saline this, Mayor Saline, all I did was offer to mediate this problem, to work with them, because they seem to be so sold on one single direction that I do not believe that it's, I don't believe that, that, uh, it's gonna do anything but make, make a bunch of lawyers rich. But I've offered, that's all I did, was offer to mediate this, and I told her again on Monday night, I will get with the DOH, I will get with, uh, I will get with the, uh, uh, county, uh, the, the city, um, council, I'll get with the sheriff's department and the troopers and the, and the police departments. We'll all sit down and we'll try to figure out the right way to go on this, get with the truckers. I will, I will be willing to do that, and I've done that most of my life. Uh, that was a big job I had with the mine workers, was to go into Bobby Brown's office and convince him why, why, uh, he needed to make some adjustments to help the local unions. I've mediated stuff all my life, that's all I did. So for a lawyer like, uh, Mr. Sharley to condemn us for something that we did not say or do, he needs to check his facts, and, and, and I'm just, I'm disappointed in him. Uh, but, so back to a positive note, uh, I'm, I'm very, I'm very happy, uh, Bill, that you're doing so much better. Uh, we're really looking forward to your return, and our prayers continue with your, your recuperation. Uh, is there any comments from the public?
Move for adjourned.
Uh, second, I have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, we're adjourned, thank you.